All right, this is the committee of the whole. This is Thursday, February 18, 2016. We're at 6:00 p.m. I have Counsel Capone.
Here.
And Counsel Delasola.
Here.
And Counsel DeFlorio.
Here.
And Counsel DePiero.
Here.
And Counsel Hill.
I got Counsel Bang.
Here.
I got Counsel McGlaughlin.
Here.
And Counsel McKinnon.
Here.
And Counsel DePolitan.
Here.
And I have Counsel Summerville.
Uh, hey.
Mr. President, we do have a couple of...
Okay, thank you. We have all, please stand. Audience, please stand and join us in the twenty-five. A place to live, a place to lie, in the United States of America. And to live, to dwell, for which it stands, one nation, under our, invisible hold, liberty, justice, and power.
All right, the first piece of business, the only piece of business. This is a resolution up by Counsel Frank Capone. That the city services and city engineers provide information regarding flooding concerns on Cottage Street, behind Park Plaza, in the culvert area on Spring Street. In addition, it is requested that all other zone areas of frequent flooding throughout the city be identified in that information as to what steps have been taken or will be taken to address these issues be provided.
Counsel Capone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. O'Rourke was going to grab a jacket. So he should be up here momentarily. We have Mr. O'Donnell in the audience. Do you want to just wait until...
Who would be looking for?
Mr. O'Rourke.
Okay, oh yeah, I saw him.
Should we just... Yeah, I know he went to go grab it. I think he went to grab a jacket.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Well, you can start with anything if you want to. What we're here for, you know?
Okay. We could have Mr. O'Donnell come forward if...
Motion made, second. Please, Mr. O'Donnell, will you come forward?
Good evening.
Please state your name and...
Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for being here. I know that Bill's on his way up. The issue that we're here, I don't want to go too far because I want to... Oh, look at this. Good timing.
The man of the hour.
Please have Mr. O'Rourke...
Second.
Motion made, and second. Have Mr. O'Rourke, Pierre, all in favor?
Aye.
Please come forward. Please state your name and title.
Bill O'Rourke, Director of Engineering. Apologize for being late, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was bending his ear in the back room. That's why he's late. It's my fault. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. You may recall, this piece was put on last session, but due to scheduling issues, I unfortunately and some others weren't able to make it, so we put it again this year. The concern is something that's been raised to my attention by many constituents in different areas. Just trying to get proactive, and I'm sure this is stuff that the administration's thought of, that you've seen across the city as well. There are two main areas of concern that I have. I know we've talked about Waters Ave at one of our prior meetings. I think we've, unless anyone else has any question about that, I think we've addressed that pretty thoroughly. I don't think there's any need to spend time on that unless anyone else wants to hear that. You've been very thorough with the information there. I was concerned about other areas, more particularly Spring Street, the culvert down there. I know that's not a new problem. That's been going on forever. I know that that's very complicated because there are multiple parties involved. The handout that you provided to the members was full of information about some of the issues that are going on. Talks about the number of folks that are impacted by that. Twelve hundred residences, several hundred businesses. It's a huge problem, huge issue. And because there's so many players involved, I don't know the dynamics of what's going on with that. So that's one thing I'd like you to address if you could. I know that there was a piece on the calendar looking for additional funds to get us through the engineering. I think it was a million to get there. And I think the whole cost of the project is probably ten, somewhere in that ballpark. And I'd like to know, our other... I know that the city's been willing to do its part. I don't know if other factions have been willing to do theirs. How much of that shares the cities versus other folks? And then the other one that I have a concern about is Cottage Street, behind the Park Plaza area from green down towards the end. That always seems to pool up with significant water. I've got photos here from 2010, 2015. The water gets up to the curb level. It's pretty high. It does get into the Park Plaza building. It affects their electrical room, parking, that kind of stuff. The... That one as well is not a new issue. I know my colleagues from Ward One will tell you that. I've got a letter from a property management company from 2001. There's a letter from our mayor going to a constituent back in 2011, talking about getting an engineer down there to take a look. So that's been an ongoing issue, too. So if you could please address what if there are other areas in the city that we're aware of that we have flooding issues? What the causes are, if we know them? And what, if anything, we can do as a city to be proactive to kind of get these things resolved? And that's the whole purpose of the piece. So I would appreciate anything that you could shed a light on that for me.
So let's start with the main drainage basin we're talking about, which encompasses the Cottage Street flooding issue and the Spring Street flooding issue. The outfall of this drainage basin is at the Market Street culvert. The Market Street culvert is tidally influenced by the Mystic River. At high tide, water runs backwards through that culvert, comes into the long channel along the railroad tracks at Boston Market Terminal, and fills the drainage system, fills our piping system. So much so that on a beautiful sunny day at an extreme high tide, you'll see flooding on Spring Street. That happens because the tide gates that we have in our drainage system, in our piping system, are not functioning properly. They are decades old, and I have a picture of them. They're approximately six feet by six feet wooden structures on hinges that flap shut when it's not raining. So they're shut when it's not raining. But they're worn out in the fact that the seal between the wood and the concrete is worn out. So when you get high tides on a beautiful spring day, water will seep by that tide gate and flood the system. And that's the water we're seeing on Spring Street. So on a beautiful summer day, we have to close Spring Street, and it's frustrating. What I'm working with, with a consulting engineer, is a concept for replacement of the Market Street culvert. This concept will eliminate the tidal fluctuations in that drainage basin. We have a preliminary proposal to develop a pump station located at the inlet to the Market Street culvert on city property. That pump station will operate when it rains. Water will come down the drainage system, enter the long channel, and at the end of the long channel will be the entrance to the pump station. The discharge pipe will be installed through the Market Street culvert and will fill the annular space around that force main. So what that effectively does, it takes the tidal activity out of the basin. So whenever it does rain, we will have a gravity system, and the discharge will be a free-flowing discharge into that long channel. And it will run to the pump station and will simply pump out the water to Island End. That, I believe, will eliminate the flooding situation on Spring Street as well as Cottage Street. Five years ago, the city made the effort to put additional catch basins in Cottage Street at the low point where we're experiencing flooding. We can put as many catch basins as we want in that low point. They won't do any good because at a high tide, the entire, I'd say, and I haven't observed it yet, but I surmise that half the drainage system is filled with tidal water. When you have half your system filled with tidal water and you have a rainstorm and the water has to go somewhere, it doesn't go anywhere fast. That's why we're experiencing, that's why I believe we're experiencing excessive puddling on that low point on Cottage Street. It doesn't happen very often. I was lucky to witness it on September 30th when we had four inches of rainfall in a four-hour period. We have, we had excessive rains that day, flooding in a number of areas in the city. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to get there to witness this myself. But I'm trying to find the time to get to some of these flooding areas, to witness them myself because, in my experience, that can eliminate models. It can eliminate expensive consulting engineers. If we have an experienced person that can get to a site, pop manholes, and actually physically see and understand what's happening in these drainage systems, we can pinpoint the location and make a fix. Perhaps fixing a capacity issue or whatever it might be. But I believe that Market Street culvert tidal activity is the reason we have flooding, not only on Spring Street, but also on Cottage Street. Another area that we have flooding that I actually did witness, I was called to the site on September 30th, was the police station parking lot and the rec center parking lot, one of the same. They had eighteen inches, perhaps 24 inches of stormwater in that location. And again, that drainage basin discharges at the Chelsea line, and that pipe runs for about 1,500 feet to the Mill Creek along Revere Beach Parkway. Again, Mill Creek is tidal. So when we're having flooding, it's very possible, and I haven't witnessed it, but I suspect that the tidal activity is getting into that piping system and not allowing water to drain out of it freely. In the past, I've seen some reports from consulting engineers saying that we have a couple of 90-degree bends in our piping system. When you have a 90-degree bend and you're asking a full pipe of flow to turn around a 90-degree bend, that's a significant loss that limits the capacity of the drainage system. That's part of the problem of our police station and recreational area. I have also been told that when that discharge pipe gets into Chelsea, Chelsea has a number of pipes that protrude through our discharge pipe. I don't know what they are. They could be gas lines. They could be water lines. They could be sewer laterals. But when you have, I believe it's a 24-inch pipe, and you have sewer laterals going through that 24-inch pipe, that significantly impedes the capacity of that pipe. That's another part of the problem that we have. What I'd like to do, and I'm putting this in my plan, and it's probably a three- to five-year plan for here in the city. I would like to purchase a camera truck. I'd like to purchase a Vector truck. And I'd like to have a dedicated stormwater crew that can operate these pieces of equipment and go out there when we have a problem and investigate these problems and get back to us, and we'll have an answer immediately on how we need to proceed. Counsel, you mentioned that we spoke enough about Parkside Apartments, Elton and Tremont. We have covered that, but I'd like to share with you what I learned the other day. Monday, we had a holiday. It snowed two inches, and we all woke up Tuesday morning to go to work. We almost slipped coming out of our doors because of the spike in temperature. That spike in temperature forced all that water to run off and create flooding situations. A snow melt created flooding situations here in the city. I went down to Elton and Tremont. I witnessed no flooding. However, I witnessed flooding on Air Force Road. We had spoke of, we had spoke of a short-circuit pipe that transfers the stormwater from that intersection of Elton and Tremont up to the North Creek. So the South Creek, where it's supposed to discharge, that pipe is deteriorated and no longer existing. So the city many years ago put in a short-circuit pipe that runs all that drainage water up to the North Creek. I went along that drain line, I popped manholes, and I witnessed something that I didn't like at all. Adjacent to the tennis courts on Tremont Street, I saw a manhole that was surcharged. When I say surcharged, I don't mean the water was coming out of the frame and cover. It wasn't coming to the surface. But the level of water was only 12 inches down. The pipe is well below that. The pipe is five feet down, and I witnessed water high in the manhole. I go to the next stream, downstream, I go to the next manhole, I pop that manhole, and I see the discharge pipe from that surcharged manhole only a quarter barrel full. It was a 12-inch pipe, a quarter-bower full. If that system had been operating properly, that pipe, I should have witnessed being three-quarters to full, relieving that whole drainage system much more efficiently than it was. Just from popping those two manholes, I'm led to believe that we have a problem in that drain pipe. What could it be? It could be a partial collapse. It could be something simple as Coke bottles and maybe a large milk container or something. Something's preventing the flow from getting through that pipe. I want to investigate that. I want to put a camera up that pipe. I want to locate the problem, if there is one. And I want to relieve the blockage or perform a spot repair if necessary. I want that pipe operating as efficiently as possible because that will minimize flooding at the intersection. That's something I would like to be able to do in-house with our stormwater crew and our camera and our Vector. With all those pieces in place, we'd be able to solve that problem in two to three hours. Right now, I have to hire an outside contractor to come in, $2,000 to $3,000 to camera that pipe. I'll have to wait a week or two, if their schedule allows it. And then if we have to do a spot repair, I have to get three bids from three contractors and schedule that. And maybe this spot repair might get done six weeks from the day I discovered the problem. I'd like to have that capability in-house and take care of that problem in 48 hours. That's where I'd like to go, and I need all your support to handle some of these issues. So that covers the issues at Cottage Street. I talked about the police station, rec center, and certainly Spring Street and the Market Street culvert. Any other questions?
Counsel Capone still has the floor. You've only asked questions about two minutes. I mean, I know it's been a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you very much for that overview. And to the best of your knowledge, those are really the areas that we're looking at. Those are the main points.
Those are ones that I'm aware of. I've only been in the city for about seven months now. I'm sure there are others. But these are the areas that have really reared their heads and brought their attention to myself.
Okay, great. I don't know if you can speak to this. If you can, fantastic. If you can't, don't. With regards to Spring Street, the whole project is, is the entire project ten, or that's the city's share of the project?
There has been debate about who's responsible for the Market Street culvert, whether it's our responsibility or whether it's others' responsibility, and whether Chelsea should be involved in a portion of the cost. We haven't figured all that out yet.
Okay.
All right. What I have, what I'm trying to figure out is the full cost. In order to build a pump station and in order to put that force main in the Market Street culvert and to fill the annular space and to take the tidal activity out of the equation, the financing is something separate that we have to continue to work through. We believe the cost of the replacement is between $10 and $15 million. We have a proposal in front of us now for $90,000 in which a consultant will perform a full survey, a geotechnical analysis along the entire stretch to find out where we have contaminated soils because the contaminated soils aspect of the project is the main cost. In the $10 to $15 million, the soil, the contaminated soil is the main cost. So let's take a look at the soil along the entire stretch, see what we're getting into, and so we can better define the $10 to $15 million project. Maybe it might move down to seven to eight to nine. But if we had a better handle on the cost, then we have a better sense of what we need to fund. And we have a better sense of where we can go to other stakeholders, such as Chelsea, such as the Boston Market Terminal, and perhaps others if they're involved.
Okay. And I don't know if you know this enough, but the 1,200 residences in those several hundred businesses that are impacted, are those exclusively Everett? Or we have folks there in Chelsea and other areas that are involved as well?
I believe it's exclusively Everett. The drainage basin above, the drainage basin above Spring Street, above the tracks, above that long channel is entirely Everett. Chelsea does have a 36-inch force main that pumps into the Market Street culvert. They've expressed their interest to remove that 36-inch discharge and take that elsewhere, which would effectively and potentially eliminate their stake in financing.
One last question if I may. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. With regards to Cottage Street, you've stated that you believe that in large part, some of that concern is because of what's going on down in Spring Street in that culvert area. I know that in the past, we, I don't know if anything's been done on Cottage to look at that. Is it possible that we have undersized pipes being fed there as well, or...
Certainly, that's part of it. When I first looked at it, initially my thought is a capacity issue, undersized pipes. But the discharge of Cottage Street is right through Spring Street. And we know on a clear summer day at a high tide, that system is full. So if it's not a clear summer day and it's raining and it's high tide, water has nowhere to go. And unfortunately, on Cottage Street, this is a low point of the city. We are an 80% impervious community. The water has nowhere else to go but to a low point and to sit until it can drain away. And unfortunately, that's when it puddles high, that when it overtops curb lines and overtops driveway aprons and potentially impacts private property.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for the intelligence.
Just to let you know, there's five names in the queue, and we will start with Counsel Lindepaulitano.
Thank you. A lot of my questions were asked here. I represented that area for 15 years. You know, I live in the area. I live on Cottage Street. So we, this is, this is an old dance. But I appreciate the information. You've provided a lot of information. You've answered a number of my questions. How much of a priority, and I guess this is more toward the Chief of Staff, how much of a priority is the administration making to get this problem resolved?
Yes, we've been addressing this pretty much on a regular basis since the chief engineer came aboard. And we've had, actually have had meetings with the outside contractors, with representatives from the city of Chelsea. And we've been adamant on addressing this issue, particularly with the engineering, and discussing all of our options and what would best fit the city and, you know, while being conscious of the financial impact it would have as well.
I know the financial impact is something that has stalled this years ago. Very focused, the city got very focused on trying to find somebody else to pay the bill. Problem has just gotten worse. And, you know, it's only a matter of time before the water down there creates structural damage to the buildings that are affected, the residents of Cottage Street. I said I've lived on that street 58 years, and the flooding's been going on a long time. So I, you know, I would really like to see it resolved. This has been great information, but this is all also, for some of us, old and has not been addressed. And I'm glad to see, that's why I want to know where we stand as far as a priority of this because we just can't keep ignoring it.
No, we would all like to see it resolved, Counsel, absolutely.
Who controls the floodgates down there? Is it an automated system or is that...
Yeah, it's automated. It's gravity will control it. So you've got two six-by-six flapping valves. When the water wants to go out, the valves will be pushed open by the stormwater. And when it's done raining, those flapper valves are supposed to sit back on their seat. They're very old, in my experience. These hinge systems rust out, they rot, and they don't function properly. I've only popped the manholes and looked in and have taken pictures of these six-by-six wooden flap gates. I certainly didn't get in and try to operate them myself.
Who's responsible for maintaining them?
We are.
Okay. Do you feel that that has deteriorated probably because of a lack of, and I don't mean recent, I mean over the years, over the last couple of decades? It just hasn't been maintained properly?
My experience, Counsel, I think it's a poor design. You're looking at wood seating on concrete. Ahead of pressure will push water by that, by that seal. It's not, it's not gasketed. And perhaps there was a gasket at one time, but it's been decades. I don't know how many, perhaps 50 years, 60 years? I don't, I don't know. But rubber deteriorates if they in fact had installed a rubber gasket. But I imagine it's all leaking by.
And only because it hasn't been mentioned, you might want to note also that when this flooding occurs, it usually also impacts Lowell-Winter Street as well, on the other side of the building where, same with the restaurant. Rita's, thank you. Right on Rita's.
Sure.
And we've, and that's something else that some of us have been addressing over the years from complaints from the residents down there. So it's probably part of the same, you know, the feeling is it's part of the same issue. If it's, if the COVID is impacting Cottage Street, Winter Street is a lot closer. It just runs parallel to Spring.
Sure, right. Yep.
All right, well, I, again, I, you know, I am very anxious to see this issue addressed. It's an old topic for a lot of us, and at some point, it gets to a point where even our constituents no longer buy our explanations, and we have no control.
Sure.
So I'm glad to hear that this is being taken care of. A little surprised by the amount of cost, but I think that's, and I know this is only less 10 years ago, but it still has to be addressed. Like any problem, you let it fester, it becomes, costs that much more. A good example is your example of the wall at Washington Street.
Right.
At Washington Street, Washington Avenue, rather. All right, that's all I have for questions, but thank you.
Sure.
Counsel McKinnon? Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the director. Mr. Director, is there any other sites that weren't mentioned, like flooding sites? I know there was some issues on like Ashton down that end and towards the Mudd and Culvert. So is there any other issues that you're looking at now, other than these ones that you're... So is there any other issues that you're looking at now other than these ones that you're?
No, no. These four areas have caught my attention. Like I say, I've only been here seven months. I've not had an opportunity to look at these others.
Okay. When you do, is there any way that we could possibly identify them with like a grading system? To where you can grade them like A through, you know, F or something to that effect and then get us a copy of that? That's how we used to do it with the streets. We would have a grading system on that.
It's going to depend on the storm that comes.
Okay.
How many inches of rainfall hit us? And depending on that, there's a possibility of raining one to, one to five, one to seven, whatever the case may be. I can, I can figure something out, perhaps.
Just so, I mean, just so that we have an idea, so we're not going into it blind and asking any frivolous questions from you. I think that when we have a grading system, we understand, yes, A is pretty good here, that's the top of the line. B, C, and then D, F, you know, we can pretty much summarize it from there. That's how we used to do it with the streeting. I, I think it was, is pretty effective for us to know what you're looking at. And it's just a way that we can actually say, okay, well, these F grades right now, we need to probably take a look at those, you know, and then go forward with that. So it would sort of help us out if you could do that. The other question that I would have is there, I, I've talked to you before in the past about, is there any, is there any clogs or any, and you don't have to get specific with this, that it's either manmade or business made that we're looking at? It's just a yes or no question that I, I would ask from you, from that. So like, say if there was a, a clog in a culvert and it was manmade or something to that effect, are we looking into that stuff now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all you have to say.
I, I, I described one earlier on, on Tremont.
Sure. But the, the, is there any additional that we're looking into now?
Uh, no, no. Because we do not have a camera van, so we can go investigate things at moment's notice.
That's what I want.
I need to spend two to three thousand dollars for every investigation. And that's just a couple of hours. So I'm not going to run up a budget of twenty thousand dollars investigating things that may not be a problem.
Sure.
I'd rather have the camera van, have the crew educated how to use it, and then go tell them, go investigate until all of you are content.
Okay. That's what I wanted you to get to. That gives us the reason why you're asking for this camera van and the camera system and also the?
I'm not asking for this camera van now. I don't believe we have the personnel to operate it. But perhaps a year or two from now, I think that would be the time to think about purchasing one.
Okay. What's the cost on that?
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand?
Two hundred to two fifty.
Two hundred to two fifty, okay. And how many crew members additional would you need at that point?
I would like to implement a collection systems crew responsible for the storm drain system, perhaps between four and six. And I'd like to implement a sewer collection systems crew, perhaps between four and six.
So in addition, eight to twelve?
Now, these may not be all new employees. I talk of perhaps potentially twelve employees. These are not necessarily all new employees. But I do think hiring some experienced personnel as crew leaders that know how to diagnose problems, operate camera vans and so on would be advantageous that we look into.
Now, would these people be licensed as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to go to outside consultants or anything like that to bring them in to shut off a valve?
The idea is to do more in-house.
Absolutely. I agree with you.
And I, I have all the experience. I came from another city municipality where I was successful implementing a sewer collection crew, camera van, vectors and so on. I like to do the same here with, with you.
Absolutely. And I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with you. But what, I mean, in the fu, well, just in the future, if we can get certain individuals licensed, that would be great. That would save, be savings to the city. Anything that you could do that way, that, that's a savings to us. Because then they're valuable to us.
Right.
And we wouldn't have to go out to outside council or consultant or anything like that to get this started.
That'd be the idea, yes.
And, um, thank you. I'll, I'll talk to you more.
It's fine.
After about the other issue that I had.
Thank you.
To Florio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I know this is an ongoing problem, especially on Cottage Street. I lived on Green Street, right behind there. It's over forty years. You know, when we were young, we thought it was great. It was like a swimming pool. So, my, my question is, you said that the camera truck would be between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand. This project is basically about a ten, fifteen million dollar project.
What, what project?
You're saying this whole project?
Oh, oh, the, the Market Street culvert project. Right, right, ten fifteen, right.
So my question to you is, as far as the, the camera truck, you said we won't need it for a couple of years. I'd like to see that in the capital improvement plan. I'd like to be proactive. In other words, I'd like to know that in two years, we're going to need this truck and we're going to, you know, that we're going to purchase this truck. There were some loans that we have or bonds that we have that are probably going to be coming off. Maybe it's something that we could consider that we could borrow money to do a project, see what's coming off and see what, how much we can do. Bonding. There, there will be some bonds that we will pay off. In other words, loans that we will pay off. So the, on the finance end, what I'm saying is maybe we can move on this a little quicker. Because I know this has been an ongoing issue for years, but it's, we're never going to move on it because it's always the money problem. There's always a money situation. Well, our grandchildren can't pay for this. So right now, let's put the finances together. Let's see what we have to do and let's see what we have to do to get the money and get it done. Add it all together. It might cost, I'm not saying to go out and, and bond ten, fifteen million all at once. You may not have to do that. You may have to bond three million two years, two million five years. So we, we will have other money coming in, but I'm not looking, you know, everybody thinks a win and we're going to throw this money away. I'm not looking to do that. Either way, whether the wind comes in or doesn't come in or didn't come in, we still have to do this project. This cannot be put on the back burner anymore. We've been talking about this. I've been on the council for eleven years. That's all we talk about, every year. We know it's, it's money. We understand taxpayers, you know, at a certain point can't afford it. But the people that are getting flooded all the time can't afford it either. So the insurance companies can't afford to keep paying all this flooding out. So one way or another, we're paying for it. So my point is, let's put, let's put it together. Let's do a feasibility study. Let's see what it's going to cost and let's get on with it.
I, I completely agree with the feasibility study, okay? Whether it's, whether it's a physical document or just our determination of whether we can do it or not. I regret to inform you that a neighboring city owns a camera van, three hundred thousand dollars. And it sits unused because their employees do not know how to operate it. I don't want to get into that situation. I want to be confident that we have the proper people on board that are trained, that can operate this properly. And, and then I would feel comfortable purchasing a camera truck.
I understand. But what is your plan to, what, what is your plan to train these employees? When? I would start tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Duly noted. That's fine.
I mean, we have to take the first initiative step. So the step that you're saying is we have to train the employees to use this camera truck before we buy it, before we purchase it. Is that correct?
Certainly it makes sense to have a camera truck and train the employees. But I'm still trying to gauge whether our employees can handle such a piece of equipment. It's difficult to train someone to operate a camera van. There's a lot to it. You need a particular type employee to learn this. Perhaps we have to hire this person or a few people. We might want to look into that.
That was going to be my next question. Then why don't we go out and maybe ask our neighbors if we can borrow their truck? Because maybe some of the, the problem is theirs. If we can borrow this truck and bring the people in, bring a couple of people in that do know how to use this camera and then train our employees.
Possibility.
So that, I mean, I, I think this is something that we need to move on. I'm really, you know, that, we just can't wait anymore. This is like, you know, if, if, if your pipe in your house is broken and it leaks and it leaks and it leaks and you continue to do that, you're going to destroy your home. So eventually, this water is going, is, I feel is going to go nowhere. It's going to go somewhere where it's really, really going to cause a lot of damage in the areas. And there's a lot of areas in Everett. This isn't just one little area. This is a lot.
Right.
So to me, I, I would recommend that we do hire someone that knows the camera truck and maybe we can borrow it from our neighbor just a couple of months or whatever until we see what the issue is, until we get new, um, more employees and then we purchase one. Figure out a way to do it. We have, we have to figure it out. So, but thank you for all your information.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Delisola?
Okay, a few questions here. The van itself, I know if you got the van for, let's say, two hundred thousand dollars a couple of years from now, how long you think you would use this van to solve the problem? And then what happens in the van afterwards if we use it for a year?
Purpose of obtaining a camera van is to learn your entire system or systems. So you purchase a camera van and you just tell your crew, go TV inspect and condition code every sewer pipe, every drain pipe. The condition coding system is a, is a coding system from one to five. One being a great pipe, five being a pipe that needs immediate attention. What we did in another community was we were required to CCTV the entire sewer system in a five-year period. During that time, I was receiving in data from the crew on the condition of all their sewer pipes. And I'd be able to sort all those condition codes and pinpoint all the fives and send out a separate crew to go fix some of those five pipes. What did that entail? It may have been just an offset joint, a spot repair. That's what I would be looking to do. So it's not just buying a camera van to fix the problem. It's buying a camera van to continuously diagnose our entire city over a long period of time. To condition code every pipe that we have, both sewer and drain, learn our problem areas and then prioritize spot repairs, lining sections of pipe to eliminate infiltration and so on. This is what's coming down the pike with the new MS four permit. They want us to eliminate infiltration and inflow. And we can find it easily with this camera van. So it'll serve a number of purposes to, to, to locate problems immediately in an hour or two. And long-term, it will help us understand our system in building an asset management program.
The next two years, we're saying we're going to wait a year or two to get this van, which I think it should be done now. But what about the smaller camera on the roll with the portable camera that you could buy? I think it's, I could be wrong.
Those are eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand?
And we had one in my other community. And that camera was a starter camera and it broke quite often. Costing thousands and thousands of dollars. I would recommend avoiding the starter camera and going right to a, 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 a full-tiered camera van system that has a Kevlar reinforced cord. Because on these starter systems, they're not Kevlar reinforced. And in such a hazardous and, and a hostile environment that these pipes are, they're all vitrified clay. They have sharp edges. And when you have a little rubber cord and a bunch of very delicate wires running through that system every day, that cord wears out. And that cord costs four thousand dollars to repair. And on one year, in one year, I needed to replace three of those cords. Twelve thousand dollars to just replace a cord. I'd like to avoid that by going right to the full camera van to avoid some of those problems I've seen in the past.
On the culvert, go to the culvert for a second. Ten to fifteen million to repair the culvert. You're talking about a pump station. That's totally separate, correct?
It's totally separate, correct. I believe two studies have been done. One was to repair, sorry, one was to replace the, the culvert in kind, take it out, put a new one right in the same place. The second study was to put a new culvert in right adjacent to it and abandon the old culvert. Those price tags came in between ten and fifteen million dollars. Those two scenarios would continue to bring this tidal activity to the outfall location. And we'd continue to have problems in Spring Street unless we updated those tide gates. The pump station takes the tidal activity out of the equation, out of the equation. And it allows for a fleet, a free flow all the way, all, all the time of our drainage water that enters that drainage basin.
You say enter, enter from the catch basins or from, it wouldn't, so when it's coming from the catch basins, coming down to the pump, the pump kicks it out into the open area?
Island and outfall, exactly.
Correct.
Exactly.
What about the, the high tide coming back at it?
Yeah. There would be some high tide water that would enter, that would enter the force main. You could potentially put a, a, a backflow preventer on that force main. But the pumps would be sized to fully force all the water. If any water came back into that force main, the pump kicked on, the pump would be strong enough to force all that water out. In fact, the pump would likely be desized for a head of water, an elevation of water, many feet above the discharge pipe. So that wouldn't be a concern.
You know the cost that pump station would be?
No. That's why we want to spend ninety thousand dollars with a consultant to do a preliminary investigation on the soils and ballparking the costs of what it would cost. We get a number, eight, nine, ten, twelve million, whatever the cost would be. And then we can concentrate on funding it. We can concentrate on approaching stakeholders and learning if they want to participate in, in also funding.
Just two more questions. On those flood doors, the old ones that have been sixty, seventy years old, could we inspect those and do something temporary to keep the water from seeping through it until we decide how we're going to fix all this?
The answer is yes. It might be quite costly. To properly inspect that, you might have to excavate the entire top of that chamber. There's two chambers. I don't know the dimensions, but for, for talking purposes, let's say they're ten by twenty. You'd have to take the entire top off that chamber, access those gates, fix those gates, do a temporary fix, place the top back on and backfill and pave the parking lot that there's now, there is now. That price tag could easily hit a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, you're talking here, ten to fifteen million for a culvert. And the cost of the pump station, we don't even know what that's going to be.
Correct.
So a hundred thousand is a hundred thousand, but it's only a drop in the bucket compared what you're going to pay for a pump station, a tr, a van and the culvert.
The hundred thousand, if we were to fix those tide gates, would likely keep all the floodwater out. But at high tide, on the downstream side of those floodgates is an elevation of water that we're not going to do anything about. So if it rains, all that storm water still has nowhere to go. Until those flap gates open as a result of the water on the downstream side discharging and decreasing in elevation and then they would work. So an argument could be made that spending a hundred thousand, whatever the cost is for a temporary fix, may not serve its purpose.
Just a last question was, on that manhole, you said you went down and the water level was high. You went to the next catch basin and it was just trickling through.
This is on Tremont Street, right.
When did that happen? When did you notice that?
Tuesday morning, Tuesday around 1:00 PM.
Have we thought of going back there? I'm just throwing ideas out here. I'm no expert. But to go down and use the vac truck to suck out the manhole that was, now there's no rain.
That's a great idea.
And then go down and see, maybe it's a, like I said, you said, it could be a milk cotton. It could be stopping that. Something hopefully be simple, but at least.
That's a great idea. I thought of it and our vector truck is down.
All right. I'll stop at that then. There'll be more questions with that. So, all right. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you have Lewis Street at the intersection of Parrish Street on your list? That's through the parkway?
I apologize, Counsel, I don't know where that is.
It's one of the worst flooding areas in the city.
I'm writing it down now.
I actually live in the neighborhood, and there isn't a home in that neighborhood that doesn't have a sump pump, okay? That's behind Richie Slush, just so you have an idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Little neighborhood, Parrish Street, Bailey Street.
Yes, 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 yes. As part of our integrated management plan, I believe that neighborhood is one of our 63 projects. We are developing an integrated management plan on a number of stormwater issues and sewer-related issues. That report is going to be completed by May of this year. It will include a list of 63 projects, and that is one of them. So it is on the list. I'm not sure where, how high a priority it is, but that's part of their study.
You're in contact when the Water Department, for instance, my neighbors call the mayor's office, and they in turn call the Water Department. And then the truck will come down, or some, the workers will come down, lift off the manhole grates and so forth, and poke around, whatever. Over the years, there's been a lot of different things happening, but so your office, I know you're new, and you are the city engineer now, no?
Director of Engineering.
Director of Engineering. Okay, good. Well, I'm glad I brought that to your attention, but as I said, there isn't a home in that whole neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood. It's industrial, you know, we put up with the trucks.
Sure.
The trains, the planes, the pollution, the smells, the noises. It's an abused neighborhood, but it's a nice neighborhood, okay? Now, Market Forge has just been torn down, as you know.
Yes.
Okay, now, that all is in the same area. And I understand there might be development. The mayor did have some meetings last year regarding that whole neighborhood, becoming mixed-use condos, whatever it may be. But when they put these new hotels and so forth, then isn't, we'll say, for instance, 300 or 400 apartments, we'll say, we'll use that as an example, and maybe 20 restaurants and some stores. Aren't they responsible for some of the infrastructure going into the pipes? The water, the flow? I mean, you have to enlarge to service these people, don't you? You have to enlarge pipes and so forth? It can only take so much, in other words.
Right. One of the requirements I'm familiar with is when we have new developments, for every one gallon of sewerage you place into the existing system, you need to take out four gallons of infiltration or inflow in the same system, okay? So you're not necessarily enlarging the pipes, but you're bettering the situation elsewhere in the system, likely in the same drainage basin, so that when you do tie your 140 apartments to that sewer line, you've improved the hydraulic conditions of it. That is a requi, that is...
You know the business.
That's out there.
But I mean to say, you know, I see some of these bigger developments. For instance, the old Charleston Shoe Building.
Yep.
Was it 300 apartments? I don't even know, but those pipes had to go into some existing pipeline, no?
Likely, likely, yes, yes.
Most likely, yeah. And you know that area there, the spring area, is called the Springs because it was a natural water spring in the, you know about that whole issue?
Sure, yeah.
Is that still there, that freshwater round, whatever they call it?
Yeah, it likely is still there. If we put developments on top of it, it's still there, potentially can rear its head.
Well, it was a good thing years ago. They used to bottle the water.
Sure.
And sell it. I mean, it was, that's why they call that neighborhood the Springs. And just a couple of weeks ago, a couple of gentlemen came down from the DPW, or the Water Department, I guess. That's a different department altogether now.
Division of, Division of the DPW, Water Department.
They were very professional. They got that big hose that looks like an oil hose that unravels.
That's the vector truck that's currently not in operation, right?
Oh, thank God it was working that day.
Right.
But these two guys came down, and I actually got out with my neighbors' adult, had their sump pumps, and you know, you're talking heating systems, you know, the mold and the mildew, anything you have in your basement really gets tainted, if you want to use that term. But these gentlemen were there for a few hours, and I went out there, and I saw pineapples, slices of pineapple floating around in the, I mean, how does this stuff end up in the water thing? And they told me that it was grease that caused this. Household grease are we talking here?
Potentially, more so industrial grease, restaurants and so on that don't have proper grease traps, or violate their cleaning requirements for those grease traps. Could be a number of things. I've seen a number of things come out of the sewer that shouldn't be in the sewer.
Well, they did a wonderful job, and the pipe went, I don't know, you're not familiar with the neighborhood evidently?
I've driven the neighborhood a few times.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Well, the end of Parrish Street, the hose went all the way to the parkway, 'cause they went down to that manhole cover, they took it off.
Right, right.
They could actually see where the hose was going, you know? This is all new to me now.
This, it's called a jetter, and it's a high-pressure, one-inch hose.
Right.
2,000 PSI and...
Which means?
2,000 pounds per square inch of water pressure cleaning that sewer. So as that nozzle goes up the pipe, the water pressure is forcing the nozzle up the pipe, but when they draw it back, that's when all the debris, all the grease, all the things hanging up on joints and so on get drawn back. And hopefully, the manhole they're operating at, they've got a catch basket that all the debris can come into the catch basin, or the catch basket, and they simply get the vacuum going, and they suck up the problem.
I see, yeah. Well, they did a wonderful job. And the other, let's see, I have, well, we went through the Market Forge area, and you know there's gonna be a lot of activity there. So when it rains in, we'll say Cottage Street, we use that for an example, that water go all the way down to the parkway, now we're hitting the Springs.
Right.
So that whole area is technically, is Lower Broadway considered a low waterline area?
Yeah, it's all low waterline down there, but that's a separate drainage system from the Springs.
Okay. And we got that covered, and there was one other thing. Well, the cost of this culvert repair, I remember it being on the council agenda over the years, and there was some concern that the actual pipe and some of the infrastructure of this nightmare there is in Chelsea. And Chelsea is, should be responsible for some of the cost, no?
It depends upon who you ask.
Well, that's, that has to be found out.
We would love for Chelsea to participate in the repair of this culvert, absolutely. We would love for Chelsea to participate in the construction of a pump station and force main.
So how do you get them to participate? Was this, am I repeating this? Was this brought up earlier? I know I was a minute late, but you gotta get them to participate, right? Is that how it works?
We hope to.
Because if it is, in fact, in Chelsea, why should, is some of their water going in it too?
A great question. The 36-inch force main currently goes into the Market Street culvert. For that reason alone, they should participate in its repair. However, they are taking the stance they want to take that force main and redirect it to a different location, thus taking their participation completely out of the Market Street culvert. So for that reason, they may try to say, Everett, you're on your own.
And they have potentially a lot of development possibilities in the produce area, we'll say. Is that part of that area, the pipe goes in that area?
The pipe goes right through the produce area, yes.
So that's potentially, you know, a reason for them to participate, I would imagine.
It could be, yeah. We could make that argument.
Well, I hope that we get a good attorney to actually represent the taxpayers of Everett. But I really have to stress to you, Director, that the Lower Lewis, Parrish Street, you know, I'm not shilling for my own neighborhood, but if you don't have that on your list, it should have been there. I know you're new, but we've got some issues.
It will be in that integrated management plan, which I'll be reviewing a draft of very shortly. And as I said, 63 projects, and that is definitely one of them.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Awark, thank you for mentioning Elm Street in that police station area, 'cause I've noticed that floods quite a bit when it rains. Are you aware of any issues with Glendale Park that are a result of that?
I do believe Elm Street floods as well. It's all tied together as the same trunk main. The low point is certainly the rec center and the police station, right in their parking lot. That's what I was asked to drive out to, to witness. When I got there, the flooding had dissipated, but I heard stories that Elm Street was flooded as well. It's all part of the same system.
Okay. And also, I was going to ask you if you thought about utilizing the current vector truck, but I was unaware, it's not working, and...
It'll be up and operating soon. They're waiting for some parts to come in. But I did pop some manholes along that entire stretch, and I was pleased to see that the pipe is clean. You would use a vac truck to clean a pipe and giving more cross-sectional area by removing rocks, bricks, debris, sand, sediment. I didn't witness any of that. I have reason to believe that it's entirely a clean system. So the constrictions in that drainage system are a combination of the bends into Chelsea. They've got pipes protruding through the drain pipe, and then Mill Creek, it being a tidal area. I haven't witnessed it yet, but I want to go out there at high tide, an extreme high tide, and see the outfall, and confirm to myself that, yes, in fact, this is not a freefall outfall at an extreme high tide. The water in the system has to compete against the elevation of the tidal water.
And although I'm new to this body, I'm aware this has been an issue for a while now. And I agree with what you said. If, you know, once we do hopefully get these issues resolved, we should look at other areas and invest in the equipment and be able to be proactive. You know, we could rent stuff, as my colleague said, but if it's gonna be a long-term, a long-term investigation of the sewer and the pipes throughout the city, I think buying the equipment is the best route.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Awark, I just want to touch on what Counsel Matuski was just talking about. First of all, with the camera trucks, how far, like, for instance, if you put it in the ground or whatever, does it go on forever? Or is it, I mean, is it only a certain amount of distance?
You're limited to the length of the cord, and you can purchase cords 2,400 feet long?
'Cause the only thing I'm asking is that, is Counsel Matuski just brought up, I mean, if this stuff, like, he said there was pineapples and things like that down in this area. My thing is that, I don't know, maybe there's a lot of stuff on the produce or that the industry's all down in that Dennis Burke and that whole area down there, that this stuff that is getting into the system and it's clogging it up. And I'm just wondering if, you know, we could see down that far to see if, you know, that is an issue, and then actually, to make our argument better, that, you know what, you actually have a lot of produce, you know, whatever, this and that, that's getting into the system that's, you know, that's causing all this backup. So I was just wondering if, you know, if the camera would ever be able to get down that far that we could look, you know, down into that area to see if there's stuff getting into the system by way of Chelsea, you know, and causing the problem.
Sewer systems have manholes placed every 300 feet in general. Sometimes a little bit longer, sometimes much shorter. But with a cord of 2,400 feet, you're gonna see everything, everything. Grease, produce. It's most advantageous to clean a pipe before you camera it, so you're gonna put your jet up the pipe, and you're gonna bring it all back, and you're gonna suck it out in your vector, and you're gonna see it. You're gonna hear it coming up through the suction pipe, and you're gonna know what it is. Produce, rocks, bricks, broken pipe, you're gonna know.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Capone, starting round two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick questions. The wooden gate that you talked about, the six-by-six, where exactly are those located?
So if you travel Spring Street all the way down to the tracks, you need to take a right-hand turn into a private driveway. Underneath that private driveway, there's a series of manholes that we popped, and we were able to put a flashlight in the manhole and witness these gates. I have pictures, I can share them with you all.
Okay, great. Now, as you go down Second Street, as you're going towards Chelsea, there's no railroad tracks. Is that still Everett, or is that outside? Is that into Chelsea? Do you know?
I don't have a map in front of me, I'm sorry. I don't know.
It's, yeah, off the park where you go down Second, you can see it down.
Right, certainly, I know where it is. I don't know.
Because someone had asked if there was actually a gate location down there.
I believe that, I think that is Everett. I think that is us. I think below that into the Market Terminal, Foster Market Terminal, is where that line takes a hook, and there's more of Chelsea in that location. But I believe those tracks we were referring to on Second is Everett.
Okay. Do we know if there are gates near those tracks? 'Cause it looks like there's a big outlet pipe there someplace. I don't know if there are gates there or not. You may not know that.
I don't know that. All I know of are the tide gates in upstream of the Market Street culvert. Two tide gates I investigated. I don't have my map in front of me. I have a color-coded storm drainage area of the entire city. I don't know if there's other tide gates in these other basins.
Okay. And that section, that strip going down Second, is that totally independent of this other area that we're talking about, the Spring Street?
It's a great question. I don't have my map in front of me. I can't say whether it is or not.
Okay. I know that, one other thing, you're talking about pipes protruding. Chelsea pipes, you're saying, were they sewage pipes?
I don't know what types of pipes. I did ask prior consultants that did TV the pipe. I wanted to see the videotape, and they told me they could not locate the videotape.
Okay, so we don't know the size of them, or?
We have no idea.
So we have no idea how much percentage is being taken up?
We only know from a report. We only know from a report that there are pipes protruding our storm drain pipe, which is in fact impacting its capacity.
Yeah, so we don't even know the percentage of what's being impacted? We're not sure what the percentage...
We don't know the percentage of cross-sectional area being reduced, right?
Could be 25%, 50%.
We don't know.
We just don't know. Okay. And I'm sure that when the time comes to do this and we're bonding, that we'll do everything we can to look, because it's a huge project, has to be done. Enormous project. There's gonna be grant money, I would hope, to help out a little bit. We'll pull whoever we can to the table. I don't know if the MWRA would be available for any of the pieces of equipment that we're looking for, any kind of contribution we might be able to get from them or other agencies in order to try to help defray some of the cost. I'm sure we'll look into all of that stuff. And the only other thing I'd say, and I know it's not your doing, and I know that a lot of the members have been here for many years, it seems, and I was up here when it was the common council a lifetime ago, it seems like there's always been a study, a survey, an engineering report that's been done in this area, year after year after year, decades ago. And we sit there, and we say, geez, how much money have we spent studying the problem instead of addressing the problem? I have a good sense that we're on top of the problem in that I think collectively the body is at a position where we really need to address it. So I'm glad that we're all on the same page. And anything that we can do, I'll speak for myself, anything we can do from the council level to get this done, I think we need to do it once and for all, stop spending the money on consultants. I know as time goes by, those reports mean nothing. And now we're talking about pumping stations, et cetera. You need to take a look at the condition of the soil and what contaminants you have in there, so yesterday's reports aren't gonna help us. So hopefully, we'll do it right this time, and we'll take the bull by the horns, just get it done and fix the problem. I think the idea of the camera truck is an excellent one, because the system doesn't go away. We need to maintain it as a community, and I think that's a wise investment. So again, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your information. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Palatano.
Thank you. I meant to ask this when I was up. Is there any funding available to assist us, MWRA, state, federal? You know, this is a major project at a time where we've got other major projects that, you know, need to be addressed as well. Is there, do we know if there's any opportunities to get any funding to assist us in getting this work done? That seems to be the one thing that has stopped this from happening. That seems to be the one thing that has stopped this from happening, and this is actually a pretty well-informed group as far as this issue goes. Just to make a point, five of the eleven of us have either represented Ward One or live in Ward One. So five of us are actually very well-knowledge about the history of this. Problem is that after fifteen years, we're no closer. So, and I'm glad to hear you're taking a, you know, serious approach in addressing this issue, but are we on our own on this? That's my question.
The answer is no.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly hope not to be on our own, and that's why this process is somewhat a little more methodical than maybe used to, but we will leave no stone unturned to find any assistance we could to make this more economically pleasing to the city as a whole.
Because the main thing is, this issue has been lingering for so long, there's a serious credibility factor out there in the public, and eventually, we've got to stop just living with the issue, living with the problem. Sorry. Thank you. That's why I wanted to see if we were working toward some assistance there. Thank you.
If there are no...thank you very much. Motion, Secretary, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Awark, thank you very much. Very informative meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You are excused with the thanks of the committee. Counselor Capone?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we refer it out to the body to refer back to sponsor.
Second.
Motion made, Secretary, refer back to sponsor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes aye. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? All opposed? You have adjourned.